I would like, first of all, I would like to remind everyone that in accordance with council code of the meeting practice other than public form section, and this meeting is being delivered here. Now, I acknowledge of country prayers of council. The prayers of the council will be read by Ren Ross Hammonds from Liverpool Church.
Please be upstanding.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to remind council that our church and the churches around Liverpool pray for council constantly, and we pray God's blessing upon you as you lead our community. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the quality of life we enjoy in Australia. We are very thankful for the freedoms we have and for those who have come to Australia to enjoy the life and liberty we can so easily take for granted. Help us to be a healthy, multi-ethnic community and have a united culture, and as a nation, to know peace and unity. At this time, we want to pray especially for those who've seen their communities destroyed by bushfires. We pray for the firefighters and other emergency services, the army, and other organisations who are fighting these fires and helping those communities on the road to recovery. We ask you to bring prosperity back to those communities where tourism and retail have been devastated. We pray for the farmers who have faced the ravages of drought and have lost stock and property, machinery, and water reserves. We pray for the many Shire councils who have been inundated with challenges and loss of infrastructure. Lord, only you can send the persistent, widespread soaking rain that we so desperately need. Please restore health and productivity to the land, fill our dams, and restore hope to those who are in despair. We pray for our Prime Minister, Scott Morrison, and opposition leader Anthony Albanese, along with our Premier Gladys Berejiklian, and opposition leader J D McKay, and for all who serve with them in government and opposition and in support services. Besides the fires, they face the growing challenge of coronavirus, SARS, and other potential disasters. We pray, Lord, that you will protect us from all who would want to do us harm. Unite our community and give us a clear direction for the future. Father, we thank you for this city of Liverpool and the long Christian heritage our city has enjoyed. We thank you that in recent decades so many have come to live here from around the world to find safety and security and share in the Aussie way of life. We pray that everyone who moves here may find the blessing that you give and know your divine hand of blessing in their lives. We pray everyone who makes this nation and this city their home may find healing from the past and hope for the future. We also pray for our council. We pray for our mayor, Wendy Waller, our councillors, and the many hard-working men and women who provide the many services which keep our city functioning. We pray for integrity and courage to avoid the temptations of office that many councils have fallen into at times. We pray for unity and peace among everyone who works and lives in our city and trust you to continue to bless our community well into the future. Bless this meeting tonight. We pray for all who speak. Give them courage, and may they be clear and confident in communicating what is on their heart for the good of our community. Father, we thank you for our past. Trust your wisdom and guidance for our present and commit ourselves to you for our future in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. We also acknowledge that God, having created the world and all that's in it, with respect, we honour the traditional Aboriginal owners of the land upon which we are meeting tonight. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of this city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of our life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors, and staff at council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Thank you. God bless you.
Australians, oh let us rejoice, for we are young and free. With golden soil and wealth for toil, our home is good by sea. Our land abound in nature's gifts of beauty, rich and grand. In history's pagelet, every stage, our Australian fair. In joyful strains, and let us sing, our hearts Australia fair. Beneath our holy and sovereign cross, we'll toll with hearts and hands to make this commonwealth of ours renowned of all the lands. For those who come across the seas, we've boundless plains to share. With courage that's all combined, to advance Australia fair. In joyful strains, and let us sing, our hearts Australia fair.
Any apologies?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I have an apology from Mayor Wendy Waller, who is unable to attend tonight for medical reasons.
Thanks. Any condolences?
Yes, if I may, Mr Deputy Mayor. Mr Deputy Mayor, John Jewell, a long-term Liverpool resident, passed away sadly on Monday 16 December 2019. John Jewell is well-known for his services to the local community and has served on many committees, including the bicentennial committee, Holesworthy Amateur Swimming Club, Macarthur Woodturners, Liverpool District and Moorbank Menchet. He was a member of the Liverpool Sailing Club. John organised the 75th anniversary commemoration of Lieutenant George Cantello's death at Lieutenant Cantello Reserve in Hammondville. At that time, he rained for the American family descendants to come to Australia, inviting them into his own homes so that they could participate in their father and grandfather's 75th memorial service, after which he proudly became their personal tour guide, taking them to Sydney's iconic tourist attractions. John was a passionate advocate for the monument erected in Lieutenant Cantello's honour, making sure it was always maintained and presented well, especially for the memorial services. He was a Liverpool Community Order of Liverpool Award recipient in 2017 for services to the community. He was the local go-to person for the history of Liverpool, in particular, the Hammondville community, where he grew up and attended school as a young boy. John was a living memory of the Hammondville housing grants from the depression years just after World War II. He would delight in telling me how the housing grants were open to those people who had recently been laid off work, were married, had kids, and had a skill to offer the Hammondville community. If you ticked all those boxes, he would say you were then entered into a lottery system, and the lucky winners had to build their own homes on a block of land given to them on the basis they supplied something of value back into the community. In John's family, they had a cow, so they supplied milk to the community. He would tell me about the Masterton family from Masterton Homes here in Liverpool, who was also one of the lottery winners. His service to the community, obviously, was building houses. The only condition placed on the new homeowners, John would tell me, was that if and when you got a job, you would then and only then pay for your home at a nominal percentage of your wage. John's love and passion for Liverpool had no limits. He was the first to put his hand up to help whenever and wherever. John had a love for working with wood and would make all sorts of wooden objects that he would give away to people who also shared his passion for Liverpool. And yes, I too was on the receiving end of one of those treasures made with love from one of Liverpool's finest residents. John was an asset to the Liverpool community. He will be sadly missed. To his wife, children, and grandchildren, I wish to extend heartfelt condolences. May John rest in peace, who was an exceptional citizen of Liverpool.
We send our condolences for their family.
Mr Deputy Mayor, if I may, if it's okay with Councilor Rhodes, if we could have the two firefighters whom lost their lives in the tragic fires over the holidays also included in that condolence, and also the four children whom lost their lives when a drunk driver rammed into them while they were on their way to get ice cream over the weekend. This happened, I'm sure everyone's seen it all over the news. If we could have that added into the condolence, please?
Thanks. Anything more? No. Now, move. We want to move it, yeah?
Yes.
I'll second.
And second. Councilor Hadid. Confirmance of minutes. Minutes of the ordinary meeting held on 11 December 2019.
I'll move.
I'll second, thank you.
Thank you. Declaration of interest?
Yep. I think we've all got the same conflict of interest. Comma one, grants donations, corporate sponsorship. I'm an ordinary member of the Historical Society, which is receiving a grant. Non-procurnary, non-significant. I'll leave the room.
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Same item. Comma zero one, member of the Historical Society. Don't hold any offices. Non-procurnary, non-significant. Don't have to leave the room, but I will anyway.
I too, Mr Deputy Mayor, am a member of the Liverpool Historical Society, so I will also leave the room. And I wish to declare that I am a former member. I don't think I'm a current financial member of the Historical Society. I will not participate in that particular item, but I will stay in the room.
Public phone presentation. First, presentation in the team on agenda. Mr John Anderson will address council on the following theme. Number, theme four of Moorbank. No mayor report tonight. Now Chief Executive Officer report.
Move a motion, Mr Deputy Mayor.
I'll second that. Sorry. I withdraw that before hearing the motion. My apologies.
Too late. And it's this one and the next one. I'm happy to move both. Pretty much just open the invitation to anyone and let the relevant officer know if they wish to attend.
I'll second.
I have a motion for CEO O2. Well, you said this one and the next one.
Yeah.
You have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll move that motion.
You move it?
Mr Deputy Mayor.
Who seconded?
I second it.
Yes, thank you.
So.
We put the motion.
I have a quick question.
ASAP for clauses, before you get back to him, you miss out.
Through the chair, if I may, I also have a question about the Women's Council One. Is there facilities for attendees who have babies?
I'd have to take that on notice, councillor. We certainly can get back to you and give you that information so you can make a decision.
I have a question about whether we are submitting policy to the conference. Because I noticed that there's a deadline contained in the in the report. But are we actually submitting policy?
Okay, we put the motion on vote or not?
That's a matter for council to determine, councillor, if you wish to submit a policy position.
We put the motion on vote because no more, yeah? Who's with and who's? You must. Thanks.
I have a motion for.
CEO O two, 2020 National General Assembly of Local Government.
I'll move that way.
Yep.
Although we've got to determine to.
Had a motion prior. Okay, I think that it will come up on the on the screen. It's as per the book virtually. But I would like to submit some motions to be included or to the National General Assembly of Local Government. The first one is a motion for Koala Protection Order. That the Local Government Association advocates for a national koala protection order. Koala populations have been desecrated as a result of the Australian bushfires and are under ever increasing threat by logging, clearing of farming land and urban development. Unless there is a national wide protection order with substantial fines and strict enforcement, Australia may lose a famous national icon forever. The second one is that the Local Government Association advocate for substantial sustain sustainable long term drought mitigation action plan to address the negative impacts of drought to deliver sustainable long term solution that ensures water supply to all Australian cities and towns. The recent drought has seen unprecedented number of towns run out of water requiring national and coordination to develop. Requiring a national coordination to develop. A, a national plan to plant indigenous drought proofing trees that will encourage rain and the retention of water in the top and sub soils. B, limit logging and land clearing plan that enforces for every tree removed, four drought proofing trees must be planted and maintained in the same local government area. Collection of floodwaters into subterranean dams and a national water pipeline network.
Can I jump in here? Just in terms of procedure, do these all come back for us to approve before they go there? Or this is our only opportunity? Okay, so can we have?
The motion first of all.
If I give all the motions and then you go through and.
Not not necessarily, sorry, May, I just answered that question, not necessarily councillor. You need to, all motions must be agreed to by council. You could do that at this council meeting or you could do it at the council meeting, the March council meeting in time to make the deadline. It is up to you as councillors to determine whether you wish to approve these motions now or whether you wish to send them back for further for further research to return to the March making and as 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 the deputy mayor has pointed out to me, you need a second as well.
So will I continue to give you the?
Wait, I seconded?
There is another few motions that I would like to have tabled. Will I proceed? Sustainable housing development that the LGA advocate for the federal government to enforce national housing development regulations that limits housing developments to cover no more than forty percent of block size in urban developments. Ensures that housing developments comply with heat syncing regulations by introducing substantial fines for non complying developments. A motion on the feral cats in urban areas that the Local Government Association advocate for funding from the federal and New South Wales state governments to support changes that enables council to provide services that identify stray cats that are not microchipped nor dissected and found on the streets to be microchipped, dissected and housed until rehomed. Increasing of feral cats in suburban areas continues to grow to near plague proportions. Cats can breed in just six weeks of age and subsequently every six week after birth of any litter. Unless action is taken, feral cat populations will only continue to grow to plague proportions and local government needs financial support to address this issue. The next motion is fast track Western Sydney rail transportation network. That Local Government Association advocate for federal government to provide funding to fast track a rail transportation network in the Western City. The next motion is Koala Sanctuary and Wildlife Hospital. That Local Government Association advocates for a state and federal funding to provide Koala Sanctuary and Wildlife Animal Hospital in the southern end of the Western Sydney Parklands of the Liverpool LGA. That's it.
Okay. If anybody want to discuss it? Yeah.
Is that working? Yeah. Can we amend the motion to read that, I guess, like they sound reasonable on the surface, but I think we need some time to consider them and we probably bring them back to the March for approval. Because I wouldn't mind working with you on the feral cats one and the transport one. But certainly happy for them to be tabled, but we'll sort of as councillors will work behind the scenes to get them to someplace where we're happy and that, you know, legal are happy that they're, you know, valid motions.
Happy to have that change?
Can I suggest it being deferred till the next council meeting in two weeks?
Now we put it on voted? Any further discussion before?
The whole thing.
Any further discussion?
Mr Deputy Mayor, if I may, I just want to suggest that we defer this to the next council meeting and give councillor Rhodes an opportunity to have them tabled in the agenda so then councillors can look over them in their own time and add things if they if they'd like.
Through through the deputy chair. I thought that was basically the motion that they're tabled at this council meeting for further discussion in the March meeting.
Yep.
So is that okay?
That's consistent with the way the motion's currently written, yes.
Mr Deputy Chair, it doesn't make sense. If you want to bring it back to the council, just defer it from today, why you bring it back to the council? The motion is moved now, it's crystal clear in front of us. If anyone wants to make any changes to it, go and do it now. While we have to approve some things and bring it back to the council later on, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
I'd like to have our motion moved.
Now we put it on vote, better think, yeah? Who, four? One, two, three, four, five, okay. Thank you. Carry it. City Economy and Growth Report, EGROW one, in no voice.
Move that way, Mayor.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay. City Community.
Sorry, just on on that.
Yes, May.
Can we just acknowledge the staff that put together the presentation? Thank you very much for the thorough presentation on on Thursday in relation to this. Congratulations on the work that you're doing and we look forward to the next 12 months. Thank you, Emily.
And I just add a an amendment to that motion, I agree with it totally, but I just wanted to acknowledge that I did ask for a detailed.
For which one?
I withdraw.
Yeah. City Community and Grants Donation.
Move the recommendation, Mr Deputy Chair.
Yeah. Thank you, Bert, yes. How many we have? Yes.
No, I do not, I said I would stay in the meeting, but I'm not following, I'm not. I'm leaving the room.
I have a.
Pecuniary.
Which one? This, Engraw? They are outside. Yeah.
Just bring bring it back.
Yeah, one, they're coming back, yeah. Now we have four. Yes.
Second.
Who seconded?
Seconded Deputy Mayor.
Any discussion? We voted to vote. All all favor, yes, thank you, Newman Ashley.
Mr Knight, could you please go and get the councillors?
That's right. We put we put this. Yes.
No, no, we'll bring it back now, just wait till they're in the room.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. I'll move a motion on the next one when you're ready, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Councillors, can I can I just interject? Thank you councillor, I had to draw attention to the fact we didn't actually take the vote on E-Gro O one, so I'll ask the deputy mayor to please put that to the vote.
Now we put it for vote, please.
E-Gro O one, innovation strategy.
The last one, yes. Who's with? Yeah.
Receive a note.
Newman Ashley. Thank you. Going to council dedication to Toda.
I'll move a motion, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Yep. Who seconded?
Hold on, it will it will come up. One, open the invitation to any councillor and CEO or delegate wishing to attend, subject to its being at no cost to council, whether monetary or by use of frequent flyer points. Two, make arrangements for travel if any interest is shown.
Happy to second it?
Thanks.
Can I propose an amendment? I can try. Looking at the invitation, it looks, you know, we were all invited, but I think there was a specific mention of the mayor. I'd like to suggest that there is that that we that there at least is some cost to cover the mayor as representing the city, it's a pretty prestigious thing that we've been invited to. But yeah, I'd be willing to see if if we're happy to cover at least some of the costs for the mayor.
I'll stick with the current motion, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Yep. You don't want to put foot, okay. Put the motion. For for, yeah, Newman Ashley. Carry it. Khan's Hill.
I'll move a motion, Deputy Mayor.
Yep.
One, as per the book, the council receives a notice to council recreation precinct two master plan progress report and two, as part of the final report on the draft master plan to be presented to council in May 2020, a full range of funding options slash sources be provided.
Happy to second it?
Yep, thank.
Again, to the, just quickly speak on it, to those involved, staff eyes, thank you for taking it from where we were, I think, six months ago, and I think we were worried six months ago that we'd have nothing for this council meeting, but it you have shown that it can happen. The community is waiting for this, we look forward to the consultation period and hopefully when it comes back to us. This council in its final act can put together a master plan for Khan's Hill and then we'll let the new council take all the glory for actually delivering it, so looking forward to May.
Isn't that what happened last time around?
Any any discussion? Any discussion? No, we put it on, yeah. Newman Ashley. Good.
Can we record that it was unanimous, Mr Deputy Mayor?
Yes. City Corruption Report, Investment Report.
The recommendation.
Seconded.
I have a question, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Yep.
The questions like this, with the elimination of the lower ranked ADIs, which also appear to be the higher yielding investments, is it predictable in the future that returns are going to be even less than the present trend? Thank you.
Mr Nandan, can you give an, I could answer that, but would you be able to give an authoritative answer there for me, please?
Through the CEO. I need to go into detail, probably I'll take this question on notice as well because we need to do a thorough analysis of the the investment that we have in the low ADIs and what the impact will be, given that the, I mean, the interest rates is predicted to go down in a couple of months.
Happy for it to be taken on notice, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Have taken on notice. We put it on vote. We put it on vote? Any discussion first? No, yes? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy for you to move on, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Okay, what we can do?
Put the motion?
Yeah, we put the motion on, yeah. Only one last, yeah.
Can I move that we move the committee minutes as a whole?
I'll second.
I have some issues.
You second? Okay, thank you. We put it on?
Which one? Can we move them as a whole except for heritage?
Second that?
All happy with that, yeah. We put it for what? Yes. Yes, Newman Ashley. Okay. Except all.
Committee O one.
Yeah. Committee O one. Yes, this one. First, minutes of Heritage Advocacy Committee on five November.
Yes, Mr Deputy Mayor, I have a question.
Yep.
But I don't think the officer, the heritage officer is here, so this may be on notice. The question is, has council got a maintenance plan for Collingwood House? I believe it has. When is the work expected to be finished?
The the heritage officer is on annual leave, so we will have to take that on notice, but I can assure you there is a maintenance plan, I just don't have the details on hand, councillor.
Move. Mr Chair, so in this case, can I ask to defer this item till we receive all the information?
Yeah, we put it on vote.
It's committee report.
Yeah.
Move as per the book.
Second it.
Yeah, put it on vote. Newman, Newman Ashley. Yeah, carry it. Now, question with notes, first one, question with note, council Hachiti?
Yes, and I have a motion from that, thank you for the response. The motion that I have is that council engage a suitably qualified organisation to undertake a full review audit on the Civic Place project from its inception, including but not limited to the changes of the design all the way through to the value for money. And I'll put a point two in there, that resources be allocated from the unrestricted reserve to undertake this review.
Do you second it?
Second it.
I'll second.
Yeah.
I'll just quickly explain why. From the inception, and yes, there were some delays out of council's control and Amendment fifty two was one of those, one of those issues that we faced, unfortunately it took a while to get that through. The original plan when we started talking about Civic Place was to have it open, I thought it was early next year, but I believe it was August this year. And we've seen some struggles along the way, not all obviously our fault. We also saw the design change a few times. We saw tenders happen. We saw people saying, well, why wasn't this out because of the changes? And councils are short us all the way, and I'm not doubting council at all, that everything was done and everything is great. There's one thing that we don't want to see though, and this won't happen, and I hope it doesn't happen, is that we saw what happened at Liverpool previously in relation to another failed project, and we don't want to see those days again. There's nothing wrong with undertaking a review, making sure we've dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's. It is a big investment. This will ensure that we've done it. Yes, are we going to spend money on a report? Will we feel better after the report? I think we will.
Any discussion? We put it on vote, please. Newman Ashley, thank you.
Mr Deputy Mayor, record me as voting against, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Second one. Question with notes, councillor Hachiti.
Yeah, thanks for the response.
Yep.
That's all.
I've got some additional questions to that, if councillor is not putting up a motion about it. Questions, okay. One thing that I've noted in the report is that drug labs that is discovered by police present contamination issues for council before granting occupation certificates. Cleaning contamination from the Clantessine Drug Laboratory ice labs are particularly difficult to achieve. And then, there is to my knowledge, I might be wrong here, only one company in Australia that is qualified to government standards to clean such premises. Unless ice contamination is removed from drug lab houses, occupation of the property can result in a serious medical issues for the occupants. What standards of cleaning, so my questions are, and I don't mind if these are taken on notice, I have asked them, but I need to do this because of questions that are being asked to me by the constituents. What standards of cleaning does council sign off on to issue an occupation certificate? Or what other procedure by council guarantees the safety of Liverpool residents? Two, to date, how many drug lab houses have been identified in Liverpool? And what did council do in those particular cases? And three, has council considered how many residents in Liverpool that may be being occupied by ice users and or manufacturers that have never been discovered by police? And what do they consider being the health implication on unsuspecting new tenants?
Point of order.
Or property owners.
Last time I checked, we weren't the police. Are these sort of issues for the police? It's a question around jurisdiction, I guess. If these questions are appropriate, I'm happy to let them go through, but they seem more like questions for the police.
Well, I'm happy to take them on notice and provide further information back. If I remember correctly, we did provide information in about two CEO updates back about the cleansing of drug labs. It's not my area of speciality, but I'm happy to. Thank you councillor Hagerty. I'm happy to take these on notice and provide the information back for councillors.
Thank you.
Okay, question number three.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor, a couple of questions and a, then a motion.
Yep.
In relation to, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm reading this right. We state that we have half the funds to do the underpass in section 711, but the figures show that we've got less than half left in the section 11 funds. The project is going to be 6 million, yet we only have 32, 2.2 million. Is there grant funding? Is there something else? Is there some other money there? Or have we got less than half in relation to the underpass? So you can look at that later, that's fine.
I want to interrogate the figures for you.
And the other, I suppose the other bit of concern is in relation to the funds, sorry, the works that we're supposed to still complete in section 11, with what's still to come in, and then throw the bridge on, the underpass on top of that. Something tells me we might run out of money to actually complete those works.
Certainly, the underpass is going to require some funding from general funds. There will not be adequate 711 funds for that. In term, in relation to, I can tell you that straight away, because we've identified that. In relation to the other works, I'd need to interrogate the figures for you, but you're most likely correct councillor.
Now, can I then move a motion based on the responses that number four?
Number four?
Five.
Yep.
On those, and it relates to some of the roads in there, especially 27th Avenue, that we immediately review the conditions of roads such as 27th Avenue and report back to council in the March meeting on the cost to bring these roads up to a standard that allows driving on them. If I get a second or I'll quickly.
I'll second it.
Who's seconded?
I remember having to meet councillor Hadid out there once, and he said, I'm over here, and I couldn't see him because he was probably in one of those holes in that road. And I'm not having, I mean, the road has been, I'm not calling him short. The 27th Avenue is almost impossible to drive on. If it's a road that we're keeping and we're responsible for, I think we owe it to the residents there to, you know, put a seal on that road and ensure that people can drive over it. There's also Flynn, there's also a few other areas. All I'm asking for is we look around that area. Obviously, development will occur and things will happen, but I'm sure we can put a code on those roads to ensure that people can get in and out safely. Thank you.
Can I?
Yep.
Propose an additional word in there? Meeting on the cost to bring the roads up to standard or to close them, that's three words, or to close, four words. I think certainly some of the roads at the back there, there's potential to sort of close them off. So I think rather than spend money on fixing them, if they're not being used and there's alternate ways in and out of the suburb, let's close them, which I think is, was part of the original plan. So consider both options.
Can I, I'll make it clear, no to closing. I think it's important, especially Middleton Grange, you look at the suburbs, Middleton Grange, West Hoxton, Carnes Hill, Hoxton Park, Edmondson, not Edmondson Park, Horningsy Park. You look at those estates, and I'm not sure how many of us drive around there during peak hour. You can't get in and out as it is. What we should be looking at doing for those whole areas is opening roads, not closing them. If there's a road there and we can resurface it and have another entry or exit point, I think we should leave that open and look at other roads. You can't get through the council in the section of a morning or an afternoon. You can't get Hoxton Park Road outside the school there on First Avenue. You can't get out of Middleton Grange with the roundabouts on Second, I think it is. No, keep them open.
Okay, any discussion? We put it on vote? Newman Ashley, yeah, carry it. Number four, Hachiti. Four, five, yeah, okay. Number six? Okay, four, five, six. Number seven, councillor Rhodes.
That one's fine, but I have a motion for question eight.
Yeah.
My motion, it concerns me greatly about the RMS traffic modelling. My motion I'll put first, that council A, engage a traffic engineer by the March council meeting with local traffic knowledge of the Liverpool LGA to prepare an independent traffic model to be made available to the public, to assist them to evaluate the effectiveness of the traffic mitigation plans put forward by the RMS based on their modelling that they refuse to make available publicly. B, allocate necessary funds from the budget to provide council with the independent traffic modelling. C, inform the RMS of council's intention to litigate against the RMS to recover all associated costs of the independent modelling, including legal costs made necessary in order for council and councillors to be able to concur with their legal obligations in performing with due diligence, the present due diligence, and present information to enable educated decisions by the community and council, made necessary because RMS will not release their modelling to council, councillors and or the public. Right to the state, D, right to the state and federal governments requesting an extension of exhibition time for council and councillors to be able to carry out their duties in accordance with the law. And my explanation for it is quite simple. Just because the RMS refuses to release its modelling publicly despite having traffic mitigation plans on exhibition based on that unsubstantiated modelling is in violation of council and councillors' due diligence to provide all information to constituents in order for them to be able to make informed decisions.
Okay.
We need a second.
Peter, yeah, thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to speak against the motion, not because I don't agree with the sentiment, because I agree with, because I disagree with the proposed way forward. I think we all agree that as taxpayers, we have a right to that modelling, especially if it concerns Liverpool. I would propose something a bit more, you know, keep our powder dry. Perhaps we have a councillor briefing where we get a law talking person in to discuss potential options that council may or may not have to get this report. I think that would be, rather than sort of charge forward all guns blazing as this sort of suggests, let's find out what avenues we have at our disposal, whether we have any legal options. And then, once we know a bit more, I'm happy to go. If there's a case, happy to go after them. People have a right to see this document.
Yes.
I have a question, sorry. In relation to point A of the motion, would a separate new report or, you know, traffic study actually change the RMS's approach to this? Because they obviously have a study that they're not releasing to council, that they're not releasing publicly. And in my mind, it doesn't seem like the RMS will kind of, you know, change their approach if we fund a separate independent study.
Okay. So I can, can I foreshadow a motion?
First, can I just advise, because it may shape your foreshadowing. You've obviously foreshadowed your foreshadowing, so obviously the deputy mayor has to put the motion to the vote first. However, what you're essentially asking to do, we could, council could submit a GIPR application tomorrow, essentially, to try and release this information. If that's unsuccessful, Chris, what's, Mr White, what's our next point of legal action we can undertake?
So through you, CEO, the follow-up options would be if the access was refused to the report, and I could think of a couple of reasons why they might try and refuse access to it. We could appeal to the Information Privacy Commissioner for a review. That decision is not binding, so even if the IPC was to say, yes, we get the report, and then RMS said, no, we're not going to give it to you even after that, then we can go to the NCAT tribunal and seek a ruling to get the report. And that's the ordinary sort of process you would take to get a report like that.
No.
I am happy to change my motion now that I've voiced our objection and our very strong objection to what the RMS is doing.
Okay.
To the consideration of council and the motion that Chris just said, and for us to proceed with that immediately.
Okay.
That's your amended motion?
Amended motion.
To lodge a GIPR application and take any, and any, any follow-up legal action necessary. Yep.
Nothing.
Just a question, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Who's seconded first? Yep, thank you. Yeah, yes.
Yes, thank you. The question through you to the relevant officer, which I think is Mr Raj. Roughly the date of the report, we don't know the contents of the report, but we do have some idea how old this report is. I was just wondering if the director could enlighten us as to roughly what is the date of this RMS report that's been withheld from us for so long?
Yeah, we'll have to take that on notice, on notice councillor, but we can get that back to you tomorrow. Again, obviously, we don't have the exact date because we're not privy to it, but I'm aware roughly at the time.
Even the year.
Yeah, yeah. I think it was 2017, but I'll take that on notice.
Question number eight.
Is the secondar happy with that revised motion?
I think so. Yes, Peter? Okay, question number eight. Councillor Rhodes.
No, that's it.
We put it on vote? First, first.
What happened to number B? Did B go? I'm just looking to see that motion, how it's written.
I believe the councillor wished to retain writing for an extension of time for council to consider its options, which was your other option, was that right?
Yes. So that's disappeared. Can we put that back into the motion?
Through the, through the, to the chair, what, what are we asking for an extension for?
The time of exhibition, because it's out on exhibition now, and people are supposed to be making their decisions. And council or councillors can't advise constituents on what they believe about the RMS modelling, because we don't know whether it actually is perfectly okay or if it has got flaws.
Yeah, we put it on vote, please. Who's with? Okay, carry it.
Can we, unanimous?
Yeah, with you? Yes, carry it. Number eight, councillor Rhodes. Question with notes. Done. Number nine, sorry. Yes, councillor Hall.
I'm happy with those responses.
You're happy? Thank you. Number 10, also councillor Hall, question with notes.
I'm happy with nine, 10 and 11.
With nine, 10 and 11, thank you. Councillor, councillor Hadid, please.
Yeah, well, I'm happy with it, but just a question is, have we seen a new date?
It's not confirmed at this point in time, but I'll let you know as soon as possible.
I'll let you know. Okay, number, a question with notes, councillor Ayad.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. I'm happy with the response in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 14, question with notes, councillor Ballut. Yep.
Page 236, councillor.
I have questions while we're giving councillor Ballut time to follow his way with his notes. If that's.
It's a good question. Yes, you start? Yeah.
Reading the reports and advice from constituents tells me that since the Pope's visit, approximately 800 horses that ever operated at the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct, approximately 600 of them were already on the Warwick Farm Racecourse Training Facility. So that is not anywhere in, anywhere in the reports, and I've wondered why. Because of the remaining 200 horses, councillors and constituents have been telling council that since 2017, they do not want to continue operating at the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct because it's too dangerous. And although that's mentioned in the report, there isn't the two, it's, we're only talking about 200 horses. So the problem that I've got with that is in the report, the council states that the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct has ever, report states that the stabled horses that are currently operating there, which is only 200 horses, supports 2.3 of Liverpool jobs. In 2018, local labour forces is approximately 67,000 for the whole of the LGA. The precinct employs less than 100 people, which is 0.15, not the 2.3. If that labour force has increased since 2020, it only makes that percentage less because there is no increase in the number of horses trained at Warwick Farm Racing Precinct. And these, these, these facts disturb me because they're not accounted for anywhere in these reports. And to my knowledge, the ATC does intend to build the training facilities on the track. And by doing so, then the 100% of the jobs in the racing precinct will be retained in Liverpool, so there is no fear of changing the zoning in the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct that is going to affect in any way the current jobs in that area. So if we acknowledge that the ATC has stated that they are in favour of B4.
This is a question?
Yes. The question is, uh, acknowledging that the ATC has stated that they are in favour of B4 zoning for the racing precinct, can councillors now be certain that council is going to amend the LEP to show B4 zoning from Shrive Na Street to the Hume Highway as resolved at the December 2019 council meeting?
Uh, that's the resolution of council. Uh, we currently have a, uh, select panel of consultants to undertake the precinct plan as directed by council. Um, i- if it hasn't hit my desk already, it will in the next day or two to finalize a consultant to undertake that precinct planning to come back to council.
Okay.
Can the facts that I have said tonight be addressed? You know, that we're only talking about 100 jobs in that racing precinct, not 2.3 of the total, of the labour force, the Liverpool LGA labour force? That, that was an overexaggeration at the best of times.
Um, the, the, the Warwick Farm Precinct Economic Study you have is a piece of work undertaken by a consultant. Um, you're of course entitled to reject those consultant's recommendations if you, if you wish to do so, and that will be reflected in the precinct study when it comes back to council.
And, sorry, I just missed, when will that report be provided?
I believe we agree for May, is that right, Mr. Moore? Yep.
All right. Yeah.
Yeah, through you, Deputy Mayor, I thank you for, uh, council for that inclusive report, appreciate that, I'm happy with that.
Fifteen.
Oh, it's me.
Councillor Hagerty.
Yeah. Um, thank you for the answer. Um, now, uh, I have a, I have a motion I'd like to put.
Okay.
In relation to Edmondson Park, um, and it's, uh, I understand that there, there's been movement in so much as media releases. Um, so I'd like to put the following motion, uh, that, uh, council welcomes any additional parking at Edmondson Park Station. Uh, but council also expresses its disappointment that to date, no work has taken place.
Okay. Seconded?
I haven't, I haven't finished despite, despite promises made by the premier and the member for Holdsworthy in January 2019.
I'd be happy to second if councillor Hagerty was to take on an amendment. Um, that council welcomes any additional parking at Edmondson Park Station, full stop. And then I'll speak against if he doesn't accept that.
You accept it?
No.
Um, can I suggest, can I suggest an amendment through the chair, if I may? That council welcomes any additional parking at Edmondson Park Station and also expresses the need for an increase in parking spots at Edmondson Park.
You accept it?
No.
No.
Can I?
Who's seconded for?
And I can speak to why.
Can I?
Who's seconded for, uh, can, you seconded? Yes. Is any discussion?
Yeah, look, I'd like to speak to why I've put the motion that way. Um, uh, any, as we've been banging on about parking for a number of years now, uh, as I state my motion there, um, any additional parking is welcome, uh, but I think it's important that we express our disappointment with the fact that a, a promise was made to the people, uh, uh, of this area, that construction would start in 2019 and the car park would be finished in mid 2020, and now that, that, that promise has been broken. So while I, uh, welcome the, the helpful suggestions from councillors opposite, I think it's important that the motion state the fact that, um, promises were made to the people of Liverpool, um, and the people in Campbelltown, because there's people that, you know, probably looking for parking in Bardia as well. Um, but there were promises made, uh, and to date, uh, you know, I was down there last week and I haven't seen a shovel or a bobcat or, or anything. We do have a, a new promise, but we don't have any additional parking at Edmondson Park.
Can I speak against?
Who's first?
Councillor Hachiti, you can go. Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I had a foreshadowed when you're ready, thank you.
Councillor Hachiti.
I'll, I'll speak against councillor Hagerty's motion, not that I, um, don't welcome the additional parking, but I find it, and I, I will withdraw if I have to, but I find it very hypocritical of council to attack another level of government, um, on a promise they made, um, and then changing, I suppose, uh, what they're going to deliver. What we do know is they did make a promise for additional car parking spots, which they've started they're going to deliver, but now they're actually increasing the number of spots from day one. If we look at council and councillor Hagerty, you've been on council now for three years, three and a half years, and if all goes well for you, another four years after that. But council also committed when they introduced the parking meters to provide multi-storey car parking, uh, station. You've now been on council for three years, and I'm yet to see a plan that says residents, uh, from the parking review that we've collect, collected, here is this beautiful, brand-new parking station, um, that we're going to provide you with your funds. So council itself has broken a commitment to its residents. When you were elected to council, in your own words, you stated you weren't here for overdevelopment, and I've seen you support a couple of planning proposals to go through. So again, another broken promise that you've actually made being on council. We can.
Point of order?
Yep.
Um, I, I, I disagree with that I've actually broken a promise, and I'm not going to get into arguments, but, um, I, I don't think I've made a promise, and that's a bit of a slur on my character.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, can I just, um, make a comment in relation to that before you make your ruling, so you make the right ruling?
Yes.
And I'm happy to go through every single, uh, video recording of council now that we publish them, but there was a council meeting where councillor Hagerty himself stated clearly that at the last election, he went in there stating that no more overdevelopment in Liverpool, uh, area was a platform that he ran on. And at that time, I pointed out to him that he did put his hand up for Shepherd Street, and he did put his hand up for, uh, the development in the CBD. So way I see it is overdevelopment, I'm against overdevelopment, so that's the basis that I actually, um, bring that, um, point up. And if I'm wrong, and anyone proves me wrong in that, I'm more than happy to walk in here and actually apologize to councillor Hagerty, um, for, for asserting that, but I'm, I think 100% sure that I'm correct on that one.
Or who's seconded?
Can I continue if there's no ruling? Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, and the point I'm getting to, things do change with us, with everybody else. We also promised that we'd deliver civic place and no fall of our own, yes, there were issues, um, that we'd deliver civic place this year, uh, but, you know, let's face it, reality is, uh, we may deliver it in about, I don't know, three, three odd years' time. The positive in all this is we are going to get parking spots there, the government has committed to it. Um, yes, it will take a little bit longer, but isn't it great to see that it may take a little bit longer, and yes, there'll be some more pressures and stress and everything else on people, but they might actually get it right the first time, instead of building a, for example, a two-lane M5, and then realising next year, by the time it's finished, that we need three, and when the three's finished, we need four, and the costs keep blowing out. We know that the government is committed to it, we know that they're full steam ahead, we know that they've made a promise, we're going to get a better product, and if you ask me, I'd rather a better product with a delay than a botchy-ochy product, just to say, okay, we, we've delivered. Um, what we should do is thank the government for that. Uh, are we disappointed it's going to take a bit longer? Yeah, but we're going to get a good product, and I don't think we should be slamming the government.
Through the deputy mayor, I have an amendment that I would like to table for the movers of all these motions to consider.
Yeah, foreshadow from, uh.
Yeah.
Councillor Ayad.
I want to make an amendment that.
After councillor Ayad, please.
Okay, so my foreshadowed is, um, that council welcomes any additional parking at Edmondson Park Station, and that council expresses the need for more parking at Edmondson Park Station. Um, and I believe councillor Hadid had something that he wanted to add.
Yes. Yes. So you can make it that, one, council will come any additional car spaces, two, that council requests the state government to implement the proposal as quick as possible.
Also, um, sorry, I'd like to add as well.
What?
I would like to note that section 335 of the Local Government Act notes that in relation to lawful decisions of the council, they are to be implemented without undue delay. So could we have an update, please, at the next council meeting of when state, the state government is notified of the need for more parking spots at Edmondson Park's train station? And basically, my, um, the motive behind this motion is that we basically lobby the government to give us more parking.
And I.
If I could have assistance with wording for that, it would be wonderful.
Can I include a amendment to the foreshadowed motion moved by councillor Ayad?
Who's seconded for councillor Ayad?
Well, nobody's seconded any of them.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I would like councillor Ayad to consider that we include in the motion that council write to state and federal ministers, requesting them to make funds available to fast-track rail infrastructure in South West Sydney. The point of the matter is, it doesn't matter how big we make these parking stations, our real problem is, there's not enough railway stations, we can't provide parking for everybody which is west of Liverpool. It's just never going to work. So unless we make that perfectly known to the people, so I'd like councillor Ayad to include that.
Are you happy councillor Ayad with this?
I'm happy to include that, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I would also like included in the motion that an update be brought before council in the March council meeting.
March.
As to when these letters were sent out.
Uh huh.
And also copies of the letters that were written to relevant ministers in state government.
The, the, the letters.
Yeah, but the new, the new.
Of the new ones. Yes, certainly, they get, they get attached to the correspondence register that goes out in the CEO update, but they can come to the council meeting too if you wish them to.
I'd like to include councillor Rhodes' fantastic, uh, little amendment to my one as well. It's excellent.
So can I just clarify in, um, councillor Rhodes' amendment, um, should that be in rail infrastructure in South Western Sydney, rather than Western Sydney?
I accept that amendment. Um, uh, no, 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 unfortunately, we must leave it at Western Sydney, although I.
I was clarifying.
Oh.
You meant South.
Okay.
Um, councillor Rhodes, do you mind if?
And that should be Western City, not Sydney.
If we add in there, namely Liverpool, the district of Liverpool, because it seems to be that Liverpool's always swept under the rug.
Councillor Ayad, I think you're, with all due respect, missing the point that Liverpool can't provide parking for the whole of the Western City.
Councillor Rhodes, I'm not missing the point, if I missed the point, I would not have added your amendment.
No.
I do understand the point, and I do understand the motive. Now, I'm asking you if you would be happy to put namely Liverpool in there, because it seems to be that Liverpool is always forgotten.
Okay.
And.
Okay.
Infrastructure in West.
Can I, can I, can I?
Western Sydney, that's supposed to be. Uh, Western Sydney is quite large.
No, Western City, the Western City.
City.
That is the, that is the actual district. But can I say, if it would please you, that council requests the state government and federal ministers, requesting them to fast-track funds for rail infrastructure in Western City, including the metro and the Lepican, uh, linked to the airport? How about that? You happy with that?
Can I just have a minute to read over the motion?
Take a minute, yes. We, we will.
I'll, uh, speak to my motion, and we can wrap up debate and have a vote. Um, so, uh, thank you for, it's great to see that everybody is, uh, enthusiastic about this issue. Um, you know, we, we, we disagree on some things, we agree on others. The one thing that we agree on is the need for more parking and more public transport, uh, certainly in Liverpool, and for some of us, the Western City. Um, but I will, I will make a couple of points. Um, councillor Hachiti used the word disappointment when he was, um, wrapping up in his marks, and, and, uh, you know, I agree with him, disappointment, that's why I've got it in, in, in the motion here. Uh, and it's important that we acknowledge that there was a commitment made before the election, before people, uh, ticked, put some numbers on their ballot and put in a ballot box, the state government committed to, uh, starting construction on car parking at Edmondson Park by late 2019 with a completion date of mid 2020. So I think we need to acknowledge that in, uh, the motion. The, um, other thing I'll address is, um, and it's, and you need to be listening councillor Hachiti, because I'm just clarifying some things here, there's a difference between overdevelopment and development. So if you're against overdevelopment, as I am, you're against bad development and bad planning, uh, you're not against any kind of development. So if a development is, uh, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's good quality of development, if it's been master planned, if it's been thought out, I don't have an issue with it. So there is a difference between saying, I'm against overdevelopment, and I'm against every building that's built in Liverpool. Uh, there's a distinction then, I think it's important. I'm all for good development, uh, and I'm also all for more parking, and I'm for, uh, I'm for people keeping their promises, especially politicians.
Okay, we need seconded for, uh.
Can I just clarify who was the second of your motion?
Okay, yeah, yeah. Now.
I think you can put it, to, to you to determine.
Yeah.
Mister.
We voted for what?
Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, we voted for what, please?
What are we voting on?
Councillor Hagerty.
First one, first motion. One, two, one, two, three. Defeated, yes. One, two. Okay, now. Division. Two. And B.
So now, now you put the first motion. Who seconded it?
Who seconded for the motion? Councillor Hachiti, who seconded?
You've got to get rid of yours.
Councillor Hadid, seconded for councillor.
Oh, no, no, get, get, I'm, I'm happy to remove my, uh, foreshadow.
You happy?
Yep, and then leave councillor Ayad's.
And, uh.
And then I'll.
Ayad, councillor Hachiti, seconded. We voted for.
Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm.
We voted for, yes.
I just want to clarify that I'm happy with the foreshadowed motion that is before the floor at the moment, thank you.
I'll, I'll speak. Can I speak for the motion? Because I just need to clarify some points.
Just a minute, uh.
Can we speak on the motion before you put it?
Yes.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Um, in, in relation to the promise that the, the government has acknowledged, the fact that they did make a promise, and the government has also been out there and been transparent and said, we did make this promise to deliver this, but we're going to deliver another, I think it was about 1,300 odd spaces, but we needed a little bit more time. So in relation to just having a, a, a kick that some people want to have at the state.
Go on, Vorder, yes.
I, I thought that when I spoke that we, they were concluding remarks and there was no more debate.
Point of order, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we've got a new motion, a foreshadow, so I believe we can speak.
You can. That's all right, that's all right. Yep.
Is it all right?
Yep.
Thank you.
No worries.
Um, the, the, the state government has came out and were very clear in relation to it, and they have stated, um, yes, we made this promise before the election, um, we're going to, um, go with that promise, but what we're going to do is delay a little bit, but ensure that we get it right the first time. So what we'll see now is about 2,000 spots, which is about 1,300 more than they initially said that they, or they promised in the state election. So a delay, get 1,300 more spots, solve the problem now, I reckon that's not a bad outcome, given that the government has actually gone out there and said, yes, this is what we're going to do. They're not trying to hide it, sweep it under the rug, or do anything like that. Um, they're actually saying, this is now what we're doing, and, and I welcome that. With some spots, you know, around the middle of this year, we'll start seeing some spots happening, they're looking at ways to, to ensure that. In relation to councillor Hagerty's point on development and overdevelopment, um, I'm not sure about what anyone's interpretation is, but I interpret overdevelopment being adding an extra 400 units into an area where there's only one in and one out, very close to a flooding area. Um, I class that, sorry, your definition of that could be different, but I class throwing 400 units into an area where you're going to go under a train line, there's only one way in, one way out.
Yep.
As an overdevelopment.
Vorder, yeah.
Um, shouldn't remarks be made through the chair? Can we please?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you, finished.
Yes, yes, we put the foreshadowed motion for councillor Ayad and vote, please.
Oh.
You and Ashley. Carried. Carried. Now, question, question with notes, councillor Hagerty, community sport. Yalla.
Uh, well, I think it's a race between, uh, next month's, or the next council meeting and the ABC Leaguing, the Lillies, so let, let's see who wins. legging the lillys, so let's see who wins.
Thank you.
You're welcome, okay.
Okay.
Presentation by councillor, any presentation? No, it's all right. Notes of motion, first one, Feral Cats and the NR programme.
Uh, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Um, I also thank the CEO for her, um, for her comments in response to the the NOM and the fact that we are liaising with both the the state minister as well as the federal department in relation to this is great, but as we heard from the, um, from Dr Chu earlier today, the current system just isn't working, it's not sort of, um, it it's not a great step of affairs for any resident at the moment, so I would like to move the motion as per the NOM.
Yeah. I will second it.
Yeah, okay.
Um, can I propose an amendment? Uh, number five, uh, that council write to the relevant state minister.
Eleven.
Um, suggesting, recommending that the state government adopt legislation similar to the West Australian CAT Act.
Councillors, just to advise, because it came through late this afternoon, I have requested that this goes on a future and councillor Rhodes, you'll be particularly interested in a future West Rock agenda, to look at whether we can have a regional solution here if cats aren't very conscious about what the council boundaries are, and I think we need to look at it as a broader western Sydney issue.
I thank you very much. And through the deputy mayor, I would like to also include an amendment into this.
Uh huh.
Uh, that, uh, and I appreciate the address given by the vet in attendance at tonight's council meeting and I appreciate the CEO's comments. To me, it is obvious that council has to continue with the public education program of public awareness and free microchipping and de-sexing campaigns through suitably qualified organisations. But I would also like to have included into the NOM, uh, that we include in the LGA and the local government New South Wales Conference's agenda, a call for federal and state government to change the Companion Act to and provide council with funding to enable council to enact the new measures identified by the minister, uh, to be able to identify stray animals and non-registered cats as homeless and de-sex and house the cats until homes can be found in order to address the feral cat plague in urban cities. The fact of the matter is that this would be a huge cost to council and we need financial support and I agree with the CEO's comment, if we can get West Rock to do this on a unified council basis, we might get somewhere, but I would like to have that motion included into the, that section to be included in the motion, that we do put it on the LGA and local government New South Wales Conference agenda and call for the federal or state governments and or state governments to provide funding to council because councils, this is enormous and it's never ending. Cats, uh, give birth every six week weeks, so you're never going to catch up and we can't make the people responsible. So obviously, we need financial assistance from the state and federal government to get this in hand.
Councillor Rhodes, you haven't worked West Rock into that yet, do you want to have West Rock into there somewhere?
Uh, can we also include another point probably before that, that we, um, that Liverpool council addresses with West Rock the opportunity for West Rock to.
Develop a regional solution.
Advocate for.
A regional solution.
A regional solution, thank you.
Okay, councillor Caliendo.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr Deputy Mayor, I'm happy to incorporate those amendments into my motion. Um, it just a point that I would.
One, chief.
Just a point that I would like to kind of be made, whether it's in the, in a West Rock forum or whether it's in correspondence back to the minister. Um, I know in the minister's correspondence, she states that fines for failing to microchip a cat or failing to register a cat have increased. However, that kind of, um, doesn't really, doesn't really address the core of the problem, which is the fact that kittens are being dumped. And so if they're being dumped, it just failing to microchip them doesn't really address the the reason why they're kind of become feral in the first place. So advocating for that particular issue to be addressed or a solution to look at that particular thing would be ideal.
We can take that into into account and 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 I'll do, forward the potential agenda to for West Rock prior to we're getting, going to that meeting.
Okay. Um, as the seconder, I'm happy to incorporate councillor Rhodes's bit there. I'll note that the WA CAT Act, and I'm happy to provide a copy, it's great reading, has, I think the fire, you've got, you basically got, I think it's 12 days or something, there's a limited period of time that if you've got a cat, you've got to get it microchipped. If you don't, you get fined $5,000. If you've got a cat and you don't get it de-sex, you're fined $5,000, unless you've got a good reason, you're a breeder. Uh, and so it's all set out in that act and I think it's a good exemplar for us to to strengthen the Companion Animals Act. Um, there's also stuff around, it's very clear what a council's responsibility is and I do need to make this point that I I don't think council is stepping up here in regards to its responsibilities on this issue. The WA CAT Act makes it very clear what what those responsibilities are and it does give councils powers to, um, basically make contact with a cat, a cat's owner, if they can't do that, then they humanely euthanise it. So very clear steps there. Um, and and I think what you'd find is that with the adequate amount of funding and some strong legislation and and a council or region that's ready to act, uh, within a few generations, we will have the feral cat problem under control and we can declare victory against felines.
Question through you, Mr Deputy CEO, to the CEO, uh, deputy mayor, sorry.
Yeah.
Did I hear right when Dr Chu was addressing council that we refuse entry to the pound?
I don't know about that, we have cats in the pound, so there are conditions under which we take cats, there are circumstances under which we don't take cats as well. Um, cats are allowed to stray, so if somebody brings in a stray, it's not an animal that's impounded, it's the issue with the Companion Animals Act at the present.
All right, so, but then if I dump a stray, I could be fined for dumping a cat, is that correct? So I'm just trying to get, what's the, where is it, where's the, where's the line drawn that a stray is at my place, I take it to the pound, you say no, if I then leave it on the footpath outside the pound, I could then be charged with dumping a cat? So should we not be opening up the doors to stray cats?
Look, it's, I think there can be some improvements in the way we deal with this. To be honest, councillor Rhodes really did capture this effectively, it's, it is a very expensive, um, option to manage cats, particularly at a no kill, a no kill shelter, um, and it is a challenge. We have a Companion Animals Act that says cats are allowed to stray, um, we have a no kill shelter, which means any animal that enters our shelter is likely to stay in the shelter, particularly cats, it's very hard to rehome cats. Um, generally, in the cats area, people rely on rescue services as we do extensively. I I would agree with you and with councillor Hagerty that we can do some work in this area though regardless.
So although it may be controversial and obviously up to council, we do have a no kill policy, do we seriously need to reconsider that no kill policy, um, based on the problem we have with feral cats? And, you know, it's not going to go down well with a lot of people, but we've got a problem.
Uh, it's, it's, it's a controversial position to take, you said that, but it's one for council to determine. Yes, the no kill policy does impact on our capacity to manage particularly the cat population.
Can I ask or add to this, sorry councillor, that anyone who moves a motion at the bottom, have council report its no kill policy to the next council meeting for council's consideration?
Yep.
It would be for councillor Caliendo.
Yeah.
But can you please clarify what you mean by a report?
The, not an actual report, we currently have a no kill policy in place. I think it's, um, important or for this council sitting here to, we've identified we've got a problem and the problem's getting worse. We're not getting any really help with these companion acts and every other thing that's going on around the place. If council is serious about tackling the problem, we don't want to see animals being harmed and put down, I I totally agree, but if one has a problem, one needs to change its policy to help that problem or solve that problem, um, bring the policy to council at the next meeting and then allow council to decide whether it supports the current policy or would like to see some changes that may help this feral cat problem that we got.
Through the deputy mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, with all due respect councillor, the motion that I put up is asking for funding from the federal and state government so that council can, uh, de-sex, microchip and house the cats until homes can be found in order to address the federal cat plagues in urban areas. Now, I think that needs to be addressed before you put up a motion about the no kill policy. Quite happy to discuss the no kill policy, but I do not want that to be implemented before we haven't followed all avenues available to council.
Can I, Mr Deputy Mayor, through you, if I may respond, firstly, will councillor take that on board, just to have the report come to council?
Yeah, I'm happy for a conversation about the no kill policy to be incorporated into the motion, um, and then, you know, for council to make that decision.
Thank you. Councillor, in response to councillor Rhodes, while I totally agree with that course of action, and as much as I love the current state and federal governments, we we're probably not going to see funding from any of them for the next three years and guess what, we're going to have a bigger problem than we got now, so we can't really sit on our hands, we've got a problem. I think it's important for us to take some action in the meantime to ensure this doesn't really blow out.
What if the cat's in a marginal seat? I withdraw.
Any further discussion? We we voted to vote.
Uh, just a quick one, on the no kill policy, can we just get a bit of verbiage, um, when it does come back around, if we were to implement it, how long would it take? How much would it cost?
Uh, yes, it's, I'm like, we can get.
We voted to vote.
I'm sorry, can I also just add in terms of the no kill policy that, sorry, um, that we also, um, have some sort of measurement in terms of what neighbouring councils or what what the standard is across New South Wales in terms of what policy they follow?
Now, we voted to vote, the last, yeah. Who's with?
Those four?
Four, one, two, three, four, six, against two, huh? Against, who's against? Jeff?
Just one.
Just one, Jeff, thank you, carried. Now, uh, bushfire, thank you, page two, nine, eight.
Uh, thank you, deputy mayor, um, I, look, I I think this one's pretty straightforward. We've all been, um, moved, uh, by what's happened over the last couple of months in regards to the bushfires, um, and to that, can I commend you for your prescient, uh, urgency motion at the last council meeting? Um, I I was very privileged to go out and visit the the crews at the Cassula and Middleton Grange and one thing that struck me when we were, I was having a chat with them was that, um, you know, you ask them sort of what do you need, what additional support, that kind of thing, they, um, one of the things that struck me was that they said we thrive on thank you and 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 the fact that that we were just down there to say thank you and and see how they were doing was it was enough for them. Um, so that sort of stuck with me and I guess that's the point of this motion, that I had the privilege of saying thank you, but I think we should extend that privilege to all of all of Liverpool. Um, and as you can see in in the report back from the CEO, um, we have done something like this before. Um, I considered doing a thank you sort of formal dinner, but I think a thank you barbecue is a little bit more informal, it's a bit more inviting, people can come and go, uh, and I think it's a, it's a great way for Liverpool to say thank you for the effort that everyone's been involved in in this effort, um, to to say thank you and and, you know, to have a chat and and potentially raise some money, so that that's it.
Question through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, to the acting CEO at the moment, just in relation to these reports that we get, and I know the CEO's sent through an update with some costings, but in the initial report that says there are no economic and financial considerations?
She is coming.
In the actual report, can we have those included in that? I'm not speaking against the motion or anything, but just to to tidy up that. In relation to councillor Hagerty, and obviously we're all on a unity ticket for the great work the the volunteers did, can I ask you to consider one point and then to take one point on board? Um, number two would be that we use our social media channels to promote, um, the RFS and how to become a volunteer in the RFS, um, we we have a big reach in that and I think if we get that out there and get more people interested in becoming volunteers, that would be another show of support. And another point that was raised in relation to the barbecue, we're looking at about $50,000, don't have an issue thanking anybody. Is the money better spent maybe in seeing how many volunteers we had in the LGA, totally up to council and I'm happy to go either way? Uh, most of these people took time off work to fight their fires and instead of spending $50,000 on a barbecue, let's face it, it would be great, there'd be jump kasi, we'd get a sausage with some barbecue sauce on it and and a few other things. Um, can we consider that amount, seeing how many volunteers we've got in the fire services from the Liverpool LGA and maybe then look at reducing their rates or giving them a cash grant for the money that they've lost if we're allowed to do it? It's great to have a barbecue, it's great to do all those things, can, is there another way that money can can be spent?
Through you, Chair, um, I did consider that early on, that we provide some form of rate relief and and I guess there are two reasons why I don't want to go with that. One is a, an equity issue, is that not everyone, not everyone that's volunteered are rate payers, some people are renting, um, it then sort of makes it a bit more complicated and a bit more difficult. The the other issue is that, you know, whether we like it or not, our, our, our ability to raise revenue is somewhat constrained and this is, you know, our, our, our tax, this is our, this is effectively our tax base, it's how we pay for parks, how we fix roads, how we pay for libraries, um, and, you know, we, we're constrained by the state government in terms of, you know, rate rises and rate pegging and all that. Um, if 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 they, you know, I I think that'd be a better course of action is that that the state government help out in in those regards in the same way that your optisters and your telsters have helped out with phone bills. Um, and and the other thing as well is, I, I want this to be a way that all of, the entire Liverpool community can get involved. Um, so while it's, you know, fantastic to offer to to, um, give rate relief, I think, um, this is more about the community, you know, having their chance to say thank you.
I'll second the motion, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Who seconded?
Yep.
Any more discussion? We put the motion.
Just a question through the CEO, through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, do, do we have any figures, how many volunteers was in Liverpool local government area?
Uh, not, yes, we can find out that information approximately, we certainly can find out for the RFS because they'll be able to find that information to us, privacy legislation notwithstanding. Um, in terms of general volunteers, we do have, we've got, no, we have some idea for the Liverpool Volunteering Centre. Anyway, I I'll have to take that on notice and I'll get some information back to you.
Any more question? Okay, we put it for what? You and Ashley, thank you.
But that, can we mark that as unanimous, I think, it's important, yeah?
No worries. Uh, no injection room, page 300.
Uh, thank you, deputy mayor, um, I was disappointed to, I'll, I'll move the motion in the book, um, disappointed to see a couple of things in in December last year.
Sorry, point, do we have a second there, Mr Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
I'll second for.
Yep. Um, disappointed to see a couple of reports in the media, uh, last year. Um, one was in regards to the tragic death of a young man in Liverpool, in the toilets of Liverpool Hospital, um, he overdosed, there was a coroner's report, um, and the coroner recommended that Liverpool should have a medically supervised injecting room. Um, I don't know where deputy state coroner Harriet Graham lives, but I'll take a guess and say it's not Liverpool, um, because if she did live in Liverpool, she would have known that, um, this council and this community resoundingly decided that we did not want a safe injecting room in Liverpool a number of years ago. Uh, I also note that there are a couple of academics floating around, uh, who are trying to, I guess, flog off a bit of research along the same lines. Now, um, I I think it's important that we nip this one in the bud now, um, we've already had this debate, uh, we, we don't want a safe injecting room or any facility that allows the safe injecting of drugs. We also acknowledge, we do acknowledge however that that drug addiction is a problem, uh, but the way you tackle that is by, uh, way you tackle that is by funding drug rehabilitation services and programs and supporting those where you can. And also by looking at the factors that contribute to drug addiction, so things like domestic violence, homelessness, mental health, as I've got in here. So this one's pretty straightforward. We effectively reaffirming what we said three years ago, or three odd years ago, which is Liverpool does not want a safe injecting room. One thing that disappoints me about this is why this is, you know, this regularly comes up every few years, that if there is an issue with ICE or there's an issue with heroin, the idea gets floated that, you know, Liverpool or the South West needs to be the home of a safe injecting room. Now, I read the newspapers quite a bit and every other day there's someone in the eastern suburbs getting done for cocaine, dealing, using, all kinds of things. I never see the suggestion that there needs to be a safe snorting room in Bondi. And when I start to see that, and when I start to see that go ahead, I'm happy to reconsider. But, you know, I think we make a strong position here and we reaffirm what we said before, which is no medically supervised injecting room in Liverpool.
Mr Deputy Mayor, I want to give notice of a foreshadowed motion. I understand normally you hear the motions, but the foreshadowed motion is long, it'd be hard to just explain it. Can I ask your indulgence to actually put it on the screen? And I take on board most of the comments that the councillor said, but there's some corrections. So am I able to present that to the council, Mr Deputy Mayor? What I'm proposing? Thank you. So if I can ask it to be put on the screen, and if I may, and I don't speak fully against councillor Hagerty's motion, but I just think my one is better because it clears up some facts, but that's up to council to decide. Firstly, I congratulate him for coming on board in relation to against it, because it was only in the, it was in the 12th of October 2016 meeting where I proposed that we reaffirm our position to never support a program that encourages the use of drugs in our LGA, right to Mr Noff at the time. We do support programs that get it off and write to the minister saying and to say to the federal government that we don't want it here. Unfortunately, I've left it out of the motion, but people can go to the minutes of that meeting. Unfortunately, that was defeated in this council. So, yes, we tried to get reaffirmation.
Point of order.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to pull councillor Hachidi up. You know, perhaps it's inadvertent, but he's, I guess there's an insinuation there that myself or this council didn't support a motion in regards to not having a ICE room or what have you. Now, if you go to the actual minutes, there was a notice of, there was a motion that passed.
Sorry, point of order in relation to that, can I finish? And then maybe councillor Hagerty may not, a point of order, doesn't need to jump the gun. In relation to that meeting, yes, there was no support for those four lines that I've put on there and that's fact and that's actually in there. But there was support from council, then moved by other councillors, which I was getting to councillor, that yes, we have done the work, there was a few things raised, but there was also the key point in that motion that was then passed, notes the importance of rational evidence-based discussions in the community assisted by advice as to the effective means of dealing with issues of prevention, rehabilitation, education to that. So in a way, the initial motion was shutting it down completely. The second motion was leaving it open to possibly looking at these things like ICE rooms, the way I read it, where we just wanted to shut it down. So that's on the record, it's got the people that voted for, it's got the people that voted against in relation to that. I haven't included in the motion, that's up to people to go and have a look for themselves. There's a few other things in councillor Hagerty's motion, which I'll bring to his attention in relation to, and the motion calls, yes, it is state government responsibility, we want them to rule it out. There's issues, and I totally agree with the domestic violence, homelessness and everything else in the motion, but it's also important to note the action that has been taken before we again attack another level of government in relation to this. In relation to, and if we look at point, blah, 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 point four, there's actually the Drug Misuse and Trafficking Act 1985, which only allows one of the supervised injecting facility licences in New South Wales to be issued. In 2016, they did a review and there was no evidence base, there was no need for it, it's just not going to happen. So you can't just open up an injecting room without an act of parliament. It's, you know, just to sort of say Crown Casinos, there's licences, it needs to go through the state government. This is an act of parliament, it will require parliament to change the act before an injecting room can go into place. And at the time of 2016, and I do acknowledge the local member at the time, Melanie Gibbons, because she got the government on board to say, no, we're not going to change this, it's not going to happen and we're not going to support a room in there. In relation to the other things that councillor Hagerty has raised, very important, but it's important not just to say, listen, give us more, more money, more money, without actually seeing what's being delivered at the moment. You can see in point five, there's a billion dollars that the government has committed to and it's increased and it goes from the homelessness to health institutions, to the outreach programs, to address complex need of people with mental health, drug alcohol issues, additional transitional accommodation, staying home, leaving violence program. There's a whole range of services that we're actually calling for here, that we want to keep going and going and going, but what we should have done first before the motion was maybe put, and the background to it, is have a look of what they're actually doing, how much increase has been afforded to these programs. There is a definite increase in all these programs. We can't get a new smoking room in Liverpool unless there's a change in parliament. I think we need to state the facts, the facts are as per the motion. I'll speak against councillor Hagerty's unless you'd like to take mine on board. I am supportive of the things in there, but I think it's important to outline all the facts.
One second for Kanchal Hachidi please.
Also.
Yes, Maza. Now we put it.
I would like to speak. Sorry, can I just clarify what councillor Hachidi's motion actually is? Because it seems like there's a significant amount of preamble or background in there.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. What I've done is had a look at councillor Hagerty's motion and all those things that councillor Hagerty is calling for, which I totally support, we need, in relation to the, you know, solving all these issues, all I'm stating is the facts in relation to that, there's no point calling for them when we know that it requires a change in the act and it's a, the work of the parliament in order to have another injecting room in Liverpool. I can't see that happening. Councillor Hagerty is saying, give us more funding for all these services. I'm outlining that there are, in the budget that was recently handed down, that the funding has increased for all these services. Liverpool is mentioned in there for the homelessness program, for example, so there are more funds coming in there. There's no point just asking for something when it's already being delivered. I think what we need to do is maybe review what the government's actually delivering before we ask for more.
Councillor Hagerty, you're right to the right.
Yep, sorry, yep, here you go.
Point of order, I think councillor Rhodes said that she was.
Well, look, I'm ready to speak at any appropriate time. I'm supportive of the basic idea of both motions, okay? But I would like to speak at some appropriate time, so when you're finished? You want me to speak now? Okay.
Yep.
Look, I am thoroughly supportive that we don't have an injecting room in Liverpool because it's clear from the data that the impact of ICE on many communities around Australia is significant and is increasing. According to the 2016 National Drug Strategy Household Survey, between 2010 and 2016, among regular meth users, there has been a 36% increase in the use of crystal meth, a 30% decrease in the use of speed, that's powdered meth. Data from the National Waste Water Drug Monitoring Programme indicates that in 2019, ICE is the most consumed illicit drug in Australia, in both capital cities and regional cities. 6.3% or 1.3 million Australians cover the edge, over the age of 14 have used methamphetamines, including ice speed or base oil, and 1.4 reported recent use in the past 12 months. Among recent meth users, over half, 57% reported using ICE compared to 20%, mainly using powdered speed. Data from the illicit drug reporting system indicates that one-third of national sample, 910 injecting drug users reported that methamphetamine, including ICE, was their drug of choice. They also state that there is an increase in the 910 injecting drug users, recent use of ICE, from 98% in 2017, from 68%, sorry, in 2017 to 75% in 2018, one in seven have used meth in the past year. How often do people use methamphetamines, including ICE? 20% weekly or daily, 10.6 once a month, 24.7 every two months and 44.6% one or two times a year. Using the above figures, there are 296,488 people nationwide over the age of 14 having used ICE on a monthly basis. How many homes have the 296,488 people lived in during the last five years? It is said that meth contamination doesn't disappear until it's removed. The meth residue has been detected in a home 10 years after it was used as a meth lab. A meth lab or people using meth in Liverpool houses damages the property values in our LGA. Where properties go undetected, unsuspecting new tenants can be made seriously ill. The cooking process can take place on a weekly basis, therefore causing severe contamination of a building in a very short period of time. Meth will not disappear unless it is removed from houses. Meth contamination cannot be painted over as it will eat its way through the new paint and continue to contaminate soft furnishings. Meth is cooked easily through using easily bought legal but non-toxic chemicals. I sympathize with drug addicts, but as councillors, we cannot encourage people with drug issues into the Liverpool LGA. It is not fair on our abiding, law-abiding citizens if we encourage drug-dependent people into Liverpool. It is at the expense of Liverpool constituents declining their property values and putting at risk their health.
Thank you. Nathan, Mr.
Yep, just to wrap up, I think we're all in agreement here. From what I can tell, no one here, I'm happy to be proven wrong when we go to a vote, but everyone here certainly agrees with the sentiment of both motions, they're both very similar. The two differences I'll point out and based on that, you can vote the way you want. I've tried to, as you can see from the responses from everyone, this is not a partisan issue. I think everyone broadly agrees on the need for us to make a clear statement that we don't want a supervised drug injecting room. And so to that, I've made my motion non-partisan, so I'm not scoring political points, I'm not talking up or talking down the government, it's just clear facts. So I think in that regards, my motion is superior to the one that councillor Hachidi's put up. And just specifically, the other difference as well is obviously I've made a call here for more funding. I welcome any funding that comes from anywhere, you know, federal, state, philanthropists, whatever, to tackle some of these problems. But one thing we've got to realise is that Liverpool is one of the fastest growing areas in Australia, so our population's growing. And on top of that, if you have a look at some of the reports that have come out in the last sort of six to 12 months, we're starting to feel the pinch in regards to economic downturns. So I think I saw a report that said that whole sort of West Hoxton, Middleton Grange area and Edmondson Park were the, you know, postcode one and two for housing stress in Sydney, for mortgage stress. There was also a report that listed Edmondson Park as sort of, you know, towards the top of postcodes in Australia that have had power cut off in the last three years. So people are starting to feel the pinch economically and when that happens, people become homeless. Now, we're a growing suburb, we're going to have more people and as a result, we'll have more people unfortunately stepping through the cracks. As a result, we need more funding to, for those support services and to help tackle some of those issues. So they're the main two differences between my motion and councillor Hachidi's. I'd like to think that I have enough support for my one, but let's put it to a vote.
Yes, now we put it for a vote. Who's with the motion? With the motion? Councillor, yeah. One, two. Who's against? We lose. Yeah. And we put now the foreshadowed motion in the fourth. Who's with? One, two, three, four. Okay, win. Of both.
Sorry, Jeff.
Jeff, only one.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, it's important.
Yeah.
I hate to be a kid.
Division. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now.
The nom 04, I have.
More bank, intermodal.
Yeah, I have a motion, Mr Deputy Mayor. I have a new motion, I gave notice of a motion, but I do have a motion which should be on.
On what?
It's coming up shortly.
I'm happy to second this motion.
I'll give the gist of the motion. In relation, we've heard calls to continue the support in relation to the intermodal. Some of us that have been here since 2010, I think, have unwavered.
Because.
All right.
Yep.
Yep. Unwavering our support against the intermodal between rallies, letters, committees, funding previously. There's been a lot of action taken by council. Unfortunately, we've seen one that is happening, but there is a community group out there that did take on the fight. And in the previous funding that we did give that community group, we saw a lot of conditions being tightened and as we heard from the speakers earlier, a lot more conditions put into place. So previously, we spent a hundred odd thousand dollars with this group. And if you ask me, we got a return on investment in relation to the conditions of consent that were actually implemented as part of that action. Council did three odd years ago have the opportunity to take on the fight itself, council chose not to, and we did pass it on to the group and they did that. What is disappointing, and I've got to put it out there of recent time, is the keyboard warriors that are out there, all of a sudden now flying, and I don't mean this to anyone that's sitting in, let me double check first, in this room. But it's funny how some people come out of everywhere and it's all council's fault and they should be doing more and whatnot and everything else, you know, good luck, good luck to those people, I'm not sure who's listening. But there is a group of people that are actually genuine and want to take this on. We considered at the last meeting, we said no. They went out there and put an application in to the courts and have asked for the funding. In relation to the funding, it will require community consultation. Unfortunately, as of, as we sit here today, I don't have enough information to fully support the funds that are being requested, but I am in principle supporter of the funds. And the motion is along the lines that we do commit to a figure in principle of 300k in relation to these proceedings. We go out to community that we have to under the legislation, we seek their feedback, which we need to do. In the meantime and between the next council meeting, we'll have an understanding from the community and their feedback and what they think, but also buys time for the group to go out there and come back to us with what is the case that they're presenting? What do we think we'll achieve from that case? You know, the outcomes that are happening. I know they have some costings there. We don't want to let them down, as in the whole community, not just this group. We promised the community we'd do something. We don't want to let them down and say, we're just walking away from you, good luck, you fight it. It's bigger than any community group, if you ask me. But we're also saying to this group, unless you can present us a case between now and the next council meeting, council ain't going to commit a cent to the legal fight and it's up to you guys to then take on the battle yourselves. So as a councillor, we're responsible for funds of the rate payer. Currently, there's not enough information to fully say yes, but we're pretty much buying time to the next council meeting, to go to community, go back to the group, give us your case and we will consider it. And it's important to note, and there are rate members here, that between now and council signing off, should council. that between now and council signing off, should council choose to do so, anything you currently do is your own financial risk. So that's just something to be very aware of.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a question.
Yes.
The deputy mayor. You might want to keep the amount confidential. Putting the amount that you're prepared to spend, I appreciate there's some difficulty with the wording. Whether that can be reported confidentially.
The issue is because it's subject to the grant provisions of section three, five, six. You need to put the financial amount in for public... I had the conversation just before the council meeting started, yeah. I agree in principle, of course, because then, you know, any lawyer's going to set their fees to the amount we've offered. But any lawyer, sorry, Mr Knight, any lawyer worth their salt. That would be the top amount. If you recall, councillors, when we provided a previous grant allocation, it was subject to the provision of invoices to Mr White. So there was a top amount, but they had to demonstrate that that money had been spent before it would trigger the payment release, which seemed like a sensible and effective way for both raid and council.
Any more question?
Yeah, I'd just like to speak in favour of the proposed motion. It's been a night of furious agreement, whether it's the intermodal, feral cats, injecting rooms. Agree with the sentiment that councillor Hachidi has expressed, which is, you know, no one wants this thing in their backyard. The amount of traffic, the amount of, you know, small particle pollution, which John spoke about earlier. It just shouldn't be lumped on our backyard. But to date, we just don't have adequate information and, you know, enough surety, enough confidence to sort of proceed. And I'll read out a bit here from the Local Government Act. The role of a councillor is as follows. To make considered and well-informed decisions as a member of the governing body. And just on those grounds, at this stage, and, you know, with the timeframe that's been given and the amount of information that's been given, it is impossible for me to make a considered and well-informed decision tonight. So giving us a few more weeks is welcome breathing space and will hopefully be enough time to make a well-informed and considered decision.
I would like to speak for the motion.
Yes.
First of all, I would like to thank the members of the community who are so tireless in their fight to mitigate the ill effects that we know the Moorbank Intermodal is going to have on our constituents. My hat goes off to you. It has been a long, long, long fight. So from councillors, I'd like to thank you first. The second thing is that I'd like to point out that it has to go on exhibition. Councillors are not able to progress that until we've had that consultation process fulfilled. So this is the only way forward that councillors could progress your motion and in support of you. Well done, and thank you.
Okay.
Just before you put it, is there any issues with any words in that motion? Just to make sure we don't have, we can go out, we can do what we've got to do, because we need to decide in February.
The one matter is the one that I flagged with you earlier councillor Hachidi wishes. Then it needs to stay on public exhibition for twenty-eight days. So what you can do is you can make the decision whether you're going to finalise it or not at that council meeting. But you would then need to delegate it to me to finalise it after it comes off exhibition on twenty-eight days. So I would just add in a, in between three and four, add in a four delegate to the CEO to finalise pending council decision on the council meeting of February.
Can we, and to that point?
Oh, yeah, actually, sorry, that could, as Mr White said, that could form part of the motion at the time, yeah. I just need to flag to you that you'll need to do that, yeah, because I don't have the authority to do it.
In the next council, I'm happy to put up something, or if it comes from staff, that we get a progress on what's happened within community. So that's actually on the agenda for next month or this month. Or do you want a NOM in there saying, give us an update during the council meeting? How do you want it brought on at the next council meeting? And at that council meeting, all I'd be seeking from yourself, Madam CEO, is so far to date, what have we received in relation to feedback from community? If you're able to tell us at that point roughly where we're sitting. And also, any issues and what have we received from raid in relation to the prospects and what we're trying to achieve in that case?
I'm happy to bring it back to the council meeting. If you want to put it in this, you can. But I'm sitting in the room. You've got it on the record. I'll bring it back.
And then at that meeting, yes, we'll then delegate to you if...
If you choose.
Yep, thanks.
Now we put it in vote, please. Who's with? One, two, three, except Jeff. Division, yes. Thank you. I am with. Yep. Okay, now we take a decision, ten minutes after we do the confidential. Thank you.
We're still out. Nathan. Yes.
Uh, can I move that we put Comp 01? No, which ones?
Jen, I've got a motion for Comp 01.
Well, hold on, um...
Can we just go in a closed session and work out what we're doing?
Yeah, just put them all in. We'll go in the closed session for all of them.
We put it in closed session?
Just easier. There's a couple we've got to ask some questions about.
Move it and second it. Yeah.
Don't you need a reason?
Thank you. We're in...
Have a lovely night.
I want to sleep with him.